Control over what we do and haven't even shown to have a lot of control over what we do so far. And this, this amendment that's in here for this one piece is just instead of three houses, the Highlands would come in with one house and just see if it, if it's consistent with the regional master plan. It's not a really a big deal. We're not talking in this city.
No, I, I know, but what I'm trying to, what I'm trying to say is the fact, I'll give you an example. With my properties, age restricted homes, almost wasn't built in Parsippany because of the Highlands. Age restricted on a piece of property that was already a huge corporate center. But we met with the Highlands and, I mean, I gotta say everything worth that. They were very gracious. They were very good with the township. We, we didn't have concerns with, you know, what they wanted, but we needed them to make certain decisions before we can set things forward. So by being in that regional Highlands Plan, it can hinder the township on certain, certain things.
What property?
And I agree, it's on Interplace Parkway. And you remember that, the attorney members going through that? And that, that was a positive for the township, senior homes and stuff like that. That would have been, and I know you dealt with it, Mike, with regards to it. And we came to a settlement, not a settlement, an agreement, and they seemed to agree with us, thank God. But that being said, and I don't think, I don't think, I think all these legislative, all these bodies, when they try to control other towns' destinies, it becomes an issue. I mean, I see what you're saying. It's only two pieces of property, anything or more. I get that part. But I also, I don't like other entities controlling the town.
Well, the Highlands is not trying to co-control the entities. They're trying to control or, or have an impact on our drinking water.
I get that, but.
Half of drinking water in New Jersey is from the ground and half that, and a big percentage of that is from the Highlands.
And, and I understand that. But I, I was the administrator in two towns that were in the Highlands. And you can ask those mayors, you can ask those committee members, man, they gotta go raise taxes somewhere else. And it's been very difficult for them to do so. But that being said, I, I hope that they have the ability to fight fair share housing more than we will. And, and that's the advantage of the Highlands. Because fair share housing, I'm telling you, they're, it's a, it's a different piece. And they gave them too much power. When they, when the governor said this is a monumental decision for affordable housing, well, no, it wasn't monumental. It was detrimental. Detrimental to towns that understand, we should have affordable housing, but not, not at the capacity and density that they want. And hopefully, the Highlands, in my opinion, the Highlands can circumvent that for us.
Yeah. Yeah. And they're separate. So let's, you know, hope, I don't want to paint with the board because.
Well, I want them to fight for us.
Fair share housing thing is a whole debacle as it is.
Any other member from the public that has any comments regarding any matter? Okay, seeing no one, I'd like to enter a motion to close the public session. Make a motion?
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Musella, seconded by Ms. Hernandez. Roll call Ms. Hernandez.
Yes.
Mr. McGrath?
Yes.
Mr. Musella?
Yes.
Mr. Neglia?
Yeah.
Mr. Karife?
Yeah.
Okay, at this time, I would like the council to briefly review the consent agenda items.
I guess this only question that I would have is about number eight. Do we have any knowledge if 169 Lackawanna Avenue will be seeking a pilot?
Council President, I can, go ahead. There's always a possibility that they will. There's nothing definite.
And you did say that they, they would be in the foot, same footprint that they are now.
Yeah, I was, I was, met with them in September. So unless anything changed, but they were talking about keeping in the existing footprint. They have, they're a family owned business. They've been in Parsippany for 30 to 35 years at another location. They are, you know, regarded highly around the state. The county economic development committee gave them an award in 2023 for, I don't know if it was retaining or bringing a new tenant to Morris County, which happened to be to their building in Parsippany, which was great. They, the footprint wouldn't change from what they initially showed us. There was an incredible buffer to where the closest residential house was. So anything that happens there would be a pretty, you know, vanilla, and it wouldn't be controversial at all.
And this is an existing office building, correct?
Yes.
And what are they trying to change it to?
I believe warehousing. Yeah. So it's, it was the old New York Life building. It's off 46 up there by Milagros down in that area. New York Life was there, was a single tenant at the time. Since pretty much 2015, it's been at the most 40% occupied. And since they took it over, it's been about 25% occupied. So it's, they're having some problems with the old outdated office building that they have. So then the other part is, so the two things on the agenda, they're not to do a pilot, they're not to say it should be an area redevelopment. It's asking the planning board to conduct a study to see if they qualify for an area of redevelopment. And then the other one is to set up an escrow so they can pay our professionals to make sure that we are doing what we're, what, we are making them do what they're supposed to do and not having it cost the taxpayers for it.
Mr. Crin, do you know, are they planning on having the, the trucking side towards Rainbow Lakes? Or would that be towards the existing buildings? Is that something we can have commentary towards?
Definitely. You can have commentary. I'm not, I don't remember exactly. I, all I remember is that it was, you know, as vanilla, a design and easy, all I kept thinking about, okay, this is going to be okay.
Yeah. I mean, it's a corporate park. I took a ride up there. The, the building's old.
Yep.
Right? And anybody can go look at it. But I guess my concern is always, we want a minimal impact. And if we keep the trucks towards the front, it's towards a corporate park. You have a massive building block and the noise. Makes all the sense in the world.
Yep.
So, okay.
Yeah, it's a good point. We'll make sure of that.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, seeing none, moving on to presentations and reports. Mayor?
Sure. Thank you. I'm gonna start with Memorial Day service was a success, a celebration. But of course, it's a moment of remembrance for those that sacrificed their lives for us so we could be and enjoy our freedoms that we have today. We had a Gold Star mom, Shoban McConnell, who in Parsippany, who gave a really, really heartfelt speech with regards to her son who passed away and Iraq, not Iraq.
Afghanistan.
Thank you, Afghanistan. The Memorial Day parade, like always, is really great. Well attended. It was a really good, good day. I, I wanted to recognize individuals that are here tonight because I have to tell you, the Blue Collars Union, they did a great job when it came to a fundraiser for a young boy named Theo. And I, I wanted to take this opportunity to thank Patrick Campbell, his wife Alice, John and Dana Purney, Michael Smith and Jamie Welsh. And I say this for a reason. You know, I was, John, you reached out to me, Michael reached out to me with regards to the event. And this is a young boy here that lives here in Parsippany, the Negli, Neglos, right? Is that their names?
Neglos.
Neglos. And it hits home for me because I, I explained to John, I explained to all of Michael, and very similar, my brother passed away, was a brain tumor. Even though this brain tumor is different than the one my brother had, he was 10, I was nine at the time, going to Eastlake. I have to tell you, I went to your guys' event, that was phenomenal. How you put that all together in that short amount of time. I think you raised little under $42,000. That, that's amazing. Totally amazing. And when I was there that night, when I was there that night, that's what I said. This is what Parsippany is about. It's about, it's about, these are town workers who are dedicated and loyal, not just to their job, but dedicated to the surroundings, dedicated to the people that they know that go to the same school system. I can't thank you guys enough. Seriously. I won't forget this because this, this really meant a lot to me. And I know it meant a lot to other people that were there. I know it meant a lot to the family. And just talking with the husband and the wife was really emotional. But you guys did a phenomenal job. I cannot thank you enough. Because that's what Parsippany is about. So thank you, gentlemen. Also, I want to get to the police commencement ceremony. I'm proud to say that we have several police officers that graduated on May 29. And Sergeant, right? Sergeant Karife?
Yes.
He was in charge of the academy. And I think they all think he yelled at them enough. But I, I want to congratulate Parsippany's finest, Patrolman Robert Hocky, Patrolman Thomas Lowly, Patrolman Ryan McConnell, Patrolman Frankie Nicoletti, and Patrolman Shalan Patel and Patrolman Nick Santangelo. They all completed the grueling 20-week program at the Morris County Police Academy. And they said that you were, you were very difficult, not difficult, you were very, very good. They love you though, Paul. I can't say they don't. That being said, before I close out, I want to talk about last night's mayor's panel, which was a success. And I know some individuals tonight said that there was no Q and A. There was a Q and A at this event. There was questions, anybody could have asked a question with regards to pilots, with regards to affordable housing, which was several, maybe three people asked questions. Very informative. I got a lot of texts today. I got a lot of people calling me up saying, that was phenomenal. That was great. That was informative. That was something that we needed. They wanted to hear the truth about pilots, how they work, especially more so, that I got out of it, was affordable housing. And the criteria that we have to meet, and all the mayors and the towns, although we have different, different needs, we have to take different ways. Now, today, I see that was a dumping ground into the Parsippany focus on letters to the editor. And, and I know those letters to the editor aren't even being written by those people. They're being written by gentlemen. And I might, I might mention his name tonight, but that's beside the point. The point I'm trying to make is this. You, if you read the letter to the editor, I mean, you don't have to. I mean, I try not to pay attention to them, but people send them to me. But there was a debate between me and the, and the mayor of East Hanover. There was no debate. He doesn't do pilots, doesn't agree with them because he doesn't have the same issues that Parsippany has. And that was the whole idea of the panel. We all approach things differently. Why? And he even said, maybe if I was the mayor of Parsippany, I might do a pilot. And why? And I spoke to him today, later today. He said, we have nowhere near the commercial properties that you have. Nowhere near it. Nowhere near the amount of ratables that we're losing, you're losing at, at an astronomical rate. So he understood that it varies town from town to town. Okay? So, and I'm gonna give you a perfect example. We have 20 vacant office spaces right now. We have more coming to Parsippany. Everybody says they don't want a warehouse, or they don't want this. But you have to be truthful. You have to be upfront. You have to be honest. But you're gonna get one of two things. Because those individuals own properties. They want to make a profit. They want to build on it. They want to do those things. So when you get a warehouse, what do you get? No school aged children, nothing like that. Now, let's talk about what Mr. Su has. I'm gonna answer your question now, with regards to saying that, the formula on sharing with regards to the school board. I'm in negotiations right now with the school board that I'm not even privy to speak about. Because when you're in negotiation, you really can't discuss that negotiation you're going through. I think we're gonna end up in a good place with regards to the schools. But you need to keep in mind, which you didn't bring up or say, how about the ratables that we lose? So this is, this is what I'm, I'm, no, I'm only answering your question. I'm not fighting with you. So we lose ratables. I'll give you an example. We lost $2 million in ratables over the last, I think from 22 to 23, or 23 to 24, whatever. 63% of that would be the school portion. Well, we gotta pay that. We don't get the money back. So, and, and that, that's what makes it difficult. Okay? Other towns, they can share more with their schools. Why? Because they don't have the ratable base that we have. And they're not losing at the pace we're losing. Okay? Just there alone, April 1st, we had a billion dollars in tax appeals. A billion dollars. I mean, Matt, you know, you went over to the tax assessor. A billion dollars in tax appeals. If, if you were to lose all those tax appeals, that's $630 million. We're not gonna lose them all. We have a very good tax assessor. So I'm not, I'm not truly concerned about that. I know, I know, Bobby, what you're thinking. But that being said, I think that panel was phenomenal last night. And when we got done, when we got done with that panel, the residents that were there, and there were a lot of them, they weren't just public workers that were there. And if the public workers show up, guess what? They live in town. If they want to come, they can come. The public workers are here tonight. So why can't they come to that meeting and say, oh, are you paying overtime for them? Are you doing this? Are you doing that? Because I heard that too. Guess what? It costs less to pay them than to hear the lies. And I got, I got tired of it over, over a course of time. This was the first positive meeting. And the residents that went to the other meeting said, you know what? Thank you for educating us. Thanking you for, you know, hey, listen, I get it. I went through the school system. Paul did, Frank did. We understand what it takes. I want to work something out with the schools, and we're going to. We're definitely going to. But at the same time, I can't discuss what, what, what we're gonna have in mind for the next meeting. But that being said, I just want to make one thing clear. I'm gonna do more of these. And it's not gonna just be about pilots. It's gonna be, and now we have a venue we can go, where we can get a lot of people at, where you don't have people picketing outside trying to shut us down. Okay? That is wrong. That's wrong. But they're gonna use the freedom of speech, you have this and that. So I'm using my freedom of speech right now. When people want to come in and try to stop us from doing things so the public gets to know the truth, I got a problem with that. I truly do. But they have a right to do it. So now I have a right to express my opinion. And I'm going to over the course of the next year and into next, next year. Because if you think affordable housing is going away, if you think pilots are going away, you can only be honest with you. They're not gonna go away. Now, not every, it's, it's case by case basis pilots, just so you know. Everybody thinks everybody's coming for a pilot. No, they don't all come for a pilot. And they all don't get a pilot. But at the end of the day, the mayor doesn't hold on to pilots. There's a process. And the process is real simple. And you, you heard about it tonight. The process, you're gonna need a redevelopment, the plan that goes to the planning board comes back to the council. We don't know if it's gonna be a pilot or not. Or if they ask for a pilot. I don't offer them a pilot. I offer nobody pilots. I want to get to Park. Park is gonna be, Phase 2 will be coming to Park. That's Landerdex on the other side. Okay, so somebody said that they didn't ask for a pilot. No, they didn't. It was 2018, 19, pre-COVID, interest rates were low, construction costs were low, materials were, you could get materials with no problem. Now let's go to post-COVID. Interest rates go up for, for construction loans, the cost of materials skyrockets. And now, just so you know, Park came back and asked me for a pilot. So they did ask for a pilot, and I turned them down. And the reason why they couldn't get a pilot was they broke ground. And so I don't know if they'll ask for a pilot the second time around for Phase 2, but I got a feeling they're going to. I got a feeling, you know, you're gonna see them. But it's gonna be the action of the council that's gonna decide if they want them or not. And it has to make sense for the town. That's what it comes down to now. All we can say, which we, we could have done over the last, the last pilots and everything else, and when these companies leave, the taxpayers of Parsippany, the residents, you, you, you bear the burden. And then, you know, who wants that? Nobody wants that. And now, you know, we're building up our police force. We're doing, we have a really good budget going forward. We're very close with, in my opinion, with the Blue Collars. Things are going very well. But that being said, I'm not gonna say much else, but I'll let the other council members, I'm not, I'm not a council member, council members speak. And I do want to say this to the fathers that are there, because I'm a father. Happy Father's Day.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to Township Council?
Yes, Council President, I'd like to make a motion to appoint Robert Quinn to the zoning board of adjustments.
So you made a motion to appoint Robert Quinn as the alternate number two. Well, you nominated him. So can I get a second on that nomination?
Yeah, I second it.
Okay, so we have a nomination for Mr. Robert Quinn to be appointed to the zoning board of adjustment in the alternate number two position. And it was seconded by Mr. McGrath. We're gonna go into roll call at this particular point in time.
So we don't talk about, well, we, any other candidates? We just nominate them?
If, if you'd like, yes, we can go into discussion. So let's go ahead and go into discussion at this point.
Well, we have four, I, I've never done this before.
So what happens generally is candidates will go ahead and apply and submit the resume to the clerk's office. The clerk would generally disperse the resume to the president and the council president. They include all the resumes in the folders that you have in front of you. So we have the resumes of all four candidates that have submitted. And at that time of the meeting, we take nominations for the candidates. That is generally the process.
Well, he did his first. So I was gonna nominate.
So what we'll do, hold on, let me, let me just, let me just speak on this one is, so what we did is now that we have a nomination and a second, we will go through the vote. In the event that this individual does obtain three votes, then they will, you know, take the seat. In the event that the motion fails and they do not get the three votes, then we will entertain another nomination. So with that being said, I will go ahead and go into roll call. And we'll begin with you, Ms. Hernandez.
Well, this really puts me in an uncomfortable position because I don't really know Robert, but I did have somebody I would have wanted to nominate. So I will say no.
Okay. Mr. McGrath?
Yes.
Mr. Musella?
Uh, yes.
Mr. Neglia?
Yes.
And Mr. Karife?
Yes.
Okay, so the motion passes four to one. Congratulations to Mr. Quinn. Moving along, at this time, we have a presentation by Matt Kavanaugh from the Green Team.
Can I use this?
Uh, no, you're not allowed. That's why it's there. Yeah, it's free.
Yeah, sometimes.
Make it darker.
It's over there.
Matt, I think just push it forward a bit.
Push it closer.
Like, no, the whole tray. Yeah.
Yes.
There you go.
Okay, roll.
There you go.
Little more, a little bit more, a little bit more, yeah. Perfect. Almost.
A little bit to the left.
There you go.
It's all right.
I, I wish I knew that there was a presentation. I would have set it up for.
I didn't know.
Well, I did mention it to the board, but.
I don't know where the head is.
Oh.
That's why we didn't know.
It wouldn't have to go forward.
Sorry.
I guess I shouldn't have done my due diligence. I just.
There's a projector.
All right. Thank you, everybody. My name is Matt Kavanaugh. I'm presenting to the Town Council and the, and the mayor. Thank you very much for having me today. So I'm the co-leader of the Parsippany Green Team, and I'm gonna be presenting on some information about Sustainable Jersey certification, and then following up with an ask at the end. But we started the Parsippany Green Team in 2019, and the stated mission of the Parsippany Green Team is to collaborate with our residents, town government and business community to identify and implement programs that improve our quality of life and the physical, environmental and financial sustainability of our community. The goal of the Parsippany Green Team is to make Parsippany a national leader in sustainability, specifically in New Jersey. So the agenda here that I'm gonna go through is a review of the Parsippany Green Team, also known as the PGT Goals, at a very high level. Go through what sustainable jerseys categories are, and then also talk about three cost savings initiatives that would lead to cost savings in the town. And then there's an appendix at the end. So in 2021, we achieved the goal in Parsippany of getting bronze certification in Sustainable Jersey. Sustainable Jersey is a nonprofit organization. Over 400 towns in, in New Jersey participate in one way, shape or form in the program. It's a points-based system. So what that means is there's over 150 different actions across multiple categories of sustainability. When you satisfy the requirements of different actions, they award you points through a certification process, and then they award you bronze, silver or gold according to how you qualify. So it's very rigorous, but it also baselines you against other towns to set the parameters. But you officially submit all of your documentation. It's a municipal program. So it's, it's designed to have civilian and municipals teams work together toward certification. So in 2021, we accrued 200 points across 12 categories to get bronze certification. This expires this year, but our new goal here is to recertify with bronze and then go for silver in 2025 and go for gold in energy and gold in water in 2026. So the silver is much more, a bigger deal. It takes 350 points. And then the gold in energy and water, there's also a gold in health, which is another consideration. But these gold certifications would put Parsippany in the top towns in New Jersey in terms of credentials. So the, the certification process is to set the tone and set the bar for how Parsippany compares to other towns in terms of their commitment to sustainability and other things in the town. So, but Sustainable Jersey has 18 broad categories across 150 different actions. You can see the diversity of sustainability is across animals, people, energy, food, green design, health and wellness, natural resources, waste management. So there's, within these 18 categories, there's over 150 different actions worth points. And each action, as I said, you have to submit all your credentials and certification, and then Sustainable Jersey will award you once per year if you get bronze, silver or gold. So a couple of the key initiatives that were underway that could lead to cost savings that I want to highlight is the sewer plant solar PV design. So in 2019, we looked at the sewer plant, which is about half of the utility bills in the town are, go towards spending for the 5.7 million kilowatt hours of consumption at the sewer plant. It's a huge energy consumption, consumer. It's also uses vast amounts of electricity. So we helped design a 4.9 megawatt solar system, which was a combination of ground and carport systems, and also helped design ground source heat pumps to heat the buildings and essentially make this facility net zero or virtually net zero. So right now, the, the design here was to use portions of the landfill or portions of adjacent territories. We looked at buildings to the north and the south, roof mount in the lower left-hand corner. We looked at that piece of property for potential ground mount solutions. But ultimately, there is sufficient land here to completely produce all the energy the sewer plant needs, and additionally potentially install battery storage, which could offer resiliency or islandability of the sewer plant so that it can survive for a duration of time in the event of an outage. So this is critical infrastructure for not only Parsippany but adjacent towns. And in this regard, we helped get a free quote from multiple developers. And these quotes and these developers nowadays offer power purchase agreements, which are no cost. ground mount solutions there and then also carport over impervious pavement surfaces. The second initiative is an energy savings improvement plan, ESIP. So this is a state-sponsored program approved by the Board of Public Utility. And ultimately, it was signed into law in 2009. It's available to municipalities. And in 2019, we started the process of evaluating 12 months of utility bills across all municipal facilities. So this was electricity as well as natural gas and oil. We got so far as to have revenue grade assessments of energy audits of all the buildings. So the first criteria was you had to do all this analysis on the energy bills. The second criteria qualified for the free LGEA energy audits of the building. Those produced reports, which are available to show what energy savings measures the town could implement across the buildings, and then work with an energy services company to come in and fund and provide the capital for this program. So by law, this program has to be cash flow positive for the town from year one. And the way it works is the ESCO comes in and funds all the energy conservation measures or improvements to the buildings. They put up the capital, they design, build, and own and operate those facilities, and then the town benefits from lower costs overall. So taking advantage of the federal tax credit right now is very important. That's going to expire in 2032. And across all the municipal facilities, the next step here would be to dust this initiative off and open up an RFP with ESCOs. And we've already written the RFP to a certain extent. So there's 14 ESCOs in New Jersey that are approved by the Board of Public Utility, so it's a very reputable program, but also offers cash flow positive savings to the town over the course of 15 to 20 years. There's some examples here of Pitts Grove, West Milford, Montville, Denville, saving millions of dollars over 20 years or 15 years. So ultimately, we'd like to get this program going again. The last one is municipal fleet electrification. This was worth, I think, 10 to 20 points. What we did here is we started with a fleet evaluation. Parsippany has over 300 vehicles in its fleet, consuming gas and diesel each year. The technology for hybrid electric vehicles and electric vehicles has improved dramatically over the past five years, and there's multiple tax credits, state, federal, and utility subsidies available for municipalities to electrify their fleet and install charging infrastructure. So these are cheaper to operate and maintain, and they come in a huge variety now for police, buses, sanitation, passengers, trucks, garbage trucks, street cleaners, you name it. There's a vehicle now for anything you could imagine that the town can use. I just, driving by, saw all the vehicles parked outside. That could easily be a fleet of electric vehicles with chargers sitting there lined up in the future, which would save the town money. I don't, we never got to the point of understanding exactly how much money was spent on gas and diesel, but we estimated this to be a high expense for the town over time. And I want to identify something about Parsippany, which is really beautiful. You know, we are an important town in the Northeast because of our location. So your average fully battery electric vehicle can go 250 to 300 miles nowadays on a full charge. That would get you from Boston all the way down to DC if you put Parsippany right in the middle. And additionally, we're at the convergence of major highways, which allows us to really invest in charging infrastructure and be a model for fleet electrification to showcase what Parsippany can do, but also for, through traffic, we could attract local businesses and attract people to stop and charge and shop at our stores and spend money and earn extra tax revenue for the town. So these are just a couple of the initiatives of the 150 that we were working on. We were working on over 50 and had about 200 points lined up. We were on path to silver. So these are some of the resources we have. And if you ever want to get in touch, parsipnygreenteam.com has all the resources as well as an email address and a way to contact us. So the ask right now at this point is that we set up a monthly working group with the mayor and the department heads. This could be an hour one month. I can run the meeting, but ultimately dust off the sustainable jersey program and try and start earning points again, especially because the bronze certification is expiring this year. So, and then ultimately, we can focus on initiatives that are going to save the town money. And these are just three of many that could actually help improve the economics of the town. So that's my presentation for today. Thank you so much for the time, and I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Matt.
Thank you, Matt. And I just want to piggyback on it for just one second, that a lot of the reason why we want to get points is because it opens Parsippany to other grants and opportunities outside of just, you know, proposals and stuff.
I think the other interesting part is when we had the heads of each group come in, power was a big concern. In fact, I remember them calling out specifically JCP and L Costs as a big driver towards why budgets were going up. It would be interesting to see sewer or other, where these things can help us. So, very interested in it.
Yeah. Or maybe one of the properties that we have that is vacant, maybe if somebody would come in and put solar in that property and...
We could talk about that, Matt. I love that.
Provide it to the town if they own it. I mean, not that we're giving it away, but, you know, an owner will come in and put, I guess there's opportunities to look at, right?
Yeah, I think any way we can save money while also, you know, doing some good for our local ecology is a win-win. And I think that roundtable is a good thing. You know, obviously, start with the, you know, the mayor and the department heads and see what assets we can monetize and also accomplish a noteworthy goal. So I think it was good. Could we get a copy of the presentation, though?
Yeah.
Okay.
Just email it to me, Matt, when you get a chance.
Sure.
Thank you. All right, moving along. Anything else before we move along? Okay. Don Paterno?
No report this evening, Council President.
Okay, Business Administrator?
Thank you, Council President. Just a couple of things I wanted to talk about. First, I want to congratulate everyone who came out and voted last Tuesday in the election. It wasn't much on the agenda, but we still have to work hard. And a big thank you to the clerk's office for doing a great job, and, you know, Leslie and Mary and Rowan, everybody else in the office, and everybody else that came at night who helped out with that. Congratulations to John George. 50 years is amazing. And I've only been here a year and a half, and there hasn't been a day where I haven't passed him in the hallway and seen him smile and see what he does for this town, because it's not only like the job that he does, it's also the enjoyment that he brings to everybody he comes across. And I am very grateful for him. Congratulations to the officers, our new officers who are coming aboard. And there's also four new ones who are going into the academy. We're going to wish them luck. Shayan Patel, Peter Jones, Keegan McCarthy, and David Prisbello. We wish them luck. Wish them luck with Sergeant Karifi, I guess. Congratulations to Noel. We were, Noel West was just ranked number six in Golf Week's latest list of must-play public golf courses in New Jersey. It's a great acknowledgement for a course that all of our employees take great care of, and we appreciate it. Please don't forget about the farmer's market that started last Friday. It's running for the next 20 or so weeks until October 25th. Every Friday, 3 to 8 over at Veterans Park. If you're going away, the police department has a house watch program. You can reach out to them. They will make sure they have dedicated patrol officers doing exterior checks of your home while you're away, so you can always have that. We're doing our best for you, for your peace of mind, too. We have water restrictions that are now in effect for the summer. On odd days, even on eve days, that's pretty much the gist of it. It's mandatory. It's from June 1st to September 30th. And most area municipalities have that same thing. And just want to close with a very happy Father's Day to all the fathers out there. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Just two quick questions. I really hate to ask you every meeting, but could we get a monthly crime report, please?
Yes.
And then, do you know if there's going to be summer hours this summer?
Well, it's being talked about. And please, we welcome your opinions, everyone up here on the council. It's being talked about. There was some difficulties with it last year that we're trying to see if we can iron out. And I don't want to speak for mayor, but if we're able to iron them out, there's a possibility of it.
Anything else? Okay, moving along. I have no report.
Township clerk, I'd like to say something.
Sure.
First, I'd like to earmark and ducktail off of what Mayor Barberio said about the blue collar workers and the event that they held the other night. It was amazing. I appreciate you guys letting me be part of it. Had a great time. I even won a bunch of stuff on a tricky trailer.
Which is a first.
So, not unless it's the first time I did, but it was an amazing event. I really, really enjoyed it. I enjoyed being part of it. What you guys did for that little boy is just simply amazing. You should all be commended. You brought the true spirit of community to this town, and that's what this town is all about. That's how I remember it growing up, and I thank you for what you did for that child. It's just amazing. Second, regarding the mayor's event last night, the roundtable, I thought it went very well as well. I thoroughly enjoyed the explanations and the discussion by all the mayors. But one thing did disturb me as I was leaving. A resident came up to me and they handed me something, and it really disturbed me because it said, "Parsippany, a great place to work, play and bribe officials to approve taxpayer-funded development projects." Now, this resident, I believe that, you know, when she told me this, and she told me that Mr. Musella handed it to her and said it was a sales pitch. So that being said, Justin, if you did indeed hand this to the resident, which I don't think she's lying to me, and it was a sales pitch, I'd like to know which official up here is taking a bribe. And as the mayor said, he asked for you to go to his office the next morning and tell him so you can go to the prosecutor's office with the chief. I, for one, take exception to this, because to me, this is defamation of character, which in New Jersey, the determination of, the defamation of character is when someone intentionally or unintentionally makes a false and harmful statement about another person to a third party. The statement can be published in many forms, including online, in newspapers, on social media, or in other electronic messages. I really take exception to this, because I don't take bribes from anybody. And I take exception to being called a thief by someone who's no longer in the audience, which I'll address at another time. To me, that's defamation of character. And I don't like it. And if you indeed do have information about an official up here, one of these council members or the mayor taking bribes, I strongly recommend you see the mayor tomorrow morning with the chief and go to the prosecutor's office, because I, for one, will not stand for that.
Well, what I would say back to you is people are able to exercise their First Amendment rights however they wish. And number two, the process that took place on December 28th, and you were a part of it, so you know exactly what went down. People came out in hundreds opposed to something that was rushed down their throats and was a terrible process that, to my knowledge, when 900 of your constituents come out in opposition to something that was rushed, was forced, and maybe it could have been good, we will never know. People have a terrible taste of what was done, and that still lingers in the climate of public opinion.
Well, that's all good and well, Justin, but I don't appreciate being accused of taking bribes. And you did indeed hand this to someone, two people told me, including the person who got it. And I don't appreciate it. And if there is someone up here taking a bribe, I really want you to come to the mayor tomorrow morning, go to the, get the chief of police there, and go right down to the prosecutor's office and give him the information, because I don't stand for anyone taking bribe. Yes, freedom of speech is great. Everyone should have freedom of speech, but not when it comes to the fame of character and attempts to hurt a person with lies. And I don't appreciate that. I don't take bribes from anyone. I've always been straightforward in everything I did, and I just won't accept that. And I expect one of two things, either an apology, or I expect you to be at the mayor's office tomorrow morning to meet the chief of police and to go to the prosecutor's office with the mayor and tell him who you know that's taken bribes in this office.
Yeah, well, none of that will happen, so...
Okay. I didn't think so.
Okay, moving along. Under Ordinance's first reading, that will be on for action at the next meeting. Non-consent agenda. R 2024-82 authorizing the award of contracts to International Fireworks Management Company for the 2024 fireworks display services. Motion to approve the resolution, please.
Motion.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Hernandez, seconded by Mr. Neglia. Roll call, Mr. Hernandez.
Yes.
Mr. McGrath?
Yes.
Mr. Musella?
Yes.
Mr. Neglia?
Yes.
Mr. Karifi?
Yes.
Motion passes. R 2024-83 approving fireworks display for the township Parsippany Troy Hills Annual Fourth of July Celebration. Motion to approve the resolution, please.
Motion.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Neglia, seconded by Mr. Hernandez. Roll call, Mr. Hernandez.
Yes.
Mr. McGrath?
Yes.
Mr. Musella?
Yes.
Mr. Neglia?
Yes.
Mr. Karifi?
Yes.
Motion passes. R 2024-87 Denning PM Construction Corporation's request to withdraw their bid for Puttingstone Heights Road Reconstruction Program Phase Two and Sanitary Sewer Improvement Project. Motion to approve the above resolution, please.
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Hernandez, seconded by Mr. Neglia. Roll call, Mr. Hernandez.
Yes.
Mr. McGrath?
Yes.
Mr. Musella?
Yes.
Mr. Neglia?
Yes.
Mr. Karifi?
Yes.
R 2024-88 authorizing the award of contract for professional services with John E. Keith Jr., ESQ, as special counsel for PFAS litigation. Motion to approve the above resolution?
Motion.
Motion made by Mr. McGrath, seconded by Mr. McGrath. Roll call, Mr. Hernandez.
Yes.
Mr. McGrath?
Yes.
Mr. Musella?
Yes.
Mr. Neglia?
Yes.
Mr. Karifi?
Yes.
Moving along, applications for license and permits. R 2024-080 approving and authorizing retail liquor licenses for renewals for the licensing term July 1st, 2024 through June 30th, 2025. Motion to approve the above resolution?
Motion.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Neglia, seconded by Mr. Hernandez. Roll call, Mr. Hernandez.
Yes.
Mr. McGrath?
Yes.
Mr. Musella?
Yes.
Mr. Neglia?
Yes.
Mr. Karifi?
Yes.
Motion passes. R 2024-81 approving the applications for license to operate a shelter and pet store. Township Parsippany Troy Hills Animal Shelter and Petco, number 1854. Motion to approve the above resolution?
Motion.
to meet the chief of police and to go to the prosecutor's office with the mayor and tell him who you know that's taken bribes in this office.
Yeah, well, none of that will happen, so.
Okay, I didn't think so.
Okay, moving along. Under Ordinance's first reading, that will be on for action at the next meeting. Non-consent agenda. R 2024-82 authorizing the award of contracts to International Fireworks Management Company for the 2024 fireworks display services. Motion to approve the resolution, please.
Motion.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Hernandez, seconded by Mr. Neglia. Roll call, Mr. Hernandez.
Yes.
Mr. McGrath.
Yes.
Mr. Musella.
Yes.
Mr. Neglia.
Yes.
Mr. Karifi.
Yes.
Motion passes. R 2024-83 approving fireworks display for the township of Parsippany Troy Hills, annual 4th of July celebration. Motion to approve the resolution, please.
Motion.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Neglia, seconded by Mr. Hernandez. Roll call, Mr. Hernandez.
Yes.
Mr. McGrath.
Yes.
Mr. Musella.
Yes.
Mr. Neglia.
Yes.
R 2024-84 authorizing the award of contract to Riverview Paving for a total base bid price of $1,732,396.95 for the 2024 road resurfacing curb and sidewalk program. Motion to approve the above resolution, please.
Motion.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Hernandez, seconded by Mr. Neglia. Roll call, Mr. Hernandez.
Yes.
Mr. McGrath.
Yes.
Mr. Musella.
Yes.
Mr. Neglia.
Yes.
Mr. Karifi.
Yes.
Motion passes. R 2024-86 authorizing water contract to JA Alexander for the total base bid price of $983,289.25 for the Edwards Road Improvement Project Phase Two. Motion to approve the above resolution, please.
Motion.
Motion made, motion made by?
What was that? Judy.
Okay.
Yeah.
Motion made by Mr. Hernandez, seconded by Mr. Neglia. Roll call, Mr. Hernandez.
Yes.
Mr. McGrath.
Yes.
Mr. Musella.
Yes.
Mr. Neglia.
Yes.
Mr. Karifi.
Yes.
Motion passes. R 2024-87 denying PM Construction Corporation's request to withdraw their bid for Puttingstone Heights Road Reconstruction Program Phase Two and Sanitary Sewer Improvement Project. Motion to approve the above resolution, please.
Motion.
Second.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Hernandez, seconded by Mr. Neglia. Roll call, Mr. Hernandez.
Yes.
Mr. McGrath.
Yes.
Mr. Musella.
Yes.
Mr. Neglia.
Yes.
Mr. Karifi.
Yes.
Motion passes. R 2024-88 authorizing the award of contract for professional services with John E. Keith Jr., ESQ, as special counsel for PFAS litigation. Motion to approve the above resolution?
Motion.
Motion made by Mr. McGrath, second?
Second.
Second made by Mr. Neglia. Roll call, Mr. Hernandez.
Um, yes.
Mr. McGrath.
Yes.
Mr. Musella.
Yes.
Mr. Neglia.
Yes.
Mr. Karifi.
Yes.
R 2024-89 acknowledging the cooperation and compliance with post-occupancy traffic study parameters relating to Dryden Wayne Johnson Road. Motion to approve the above resolution?
Motion.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Neglia, seconded by Mr. McGrath. Roll call, Mr. Hernandez.
Yes.
Mr. McGrath.
Yes.
Mr. Musella.
Yes.
Mr. Neglia.
Yes.
Mr. Karifi.
Yes.
Moving along, applications for license and permits. R 2024-080 approving and authorizing retail liquor licenses for renewals for the licensing term July 1st, 2024 through June 30th, 2025. Motion to approve the above resolution?
Motion.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Neglia, seconded by Mr. Hernandez. Roll call, Mr. Hernandez.
Yes.
Mr. McGrath.
Yes.
Mr. Musella.
Yes.
Mr. Neglia.
Yes.
Mr. Karifi.
Yes.
Motion passes. R 2024-81 approving the applications for license to operate a shelter and pet store. Township of Parsippany Troy Hills Animal Shelter and Pet Co., number 1854. Motion to approve the above resolution?
Motion.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Hernandez, seconded by Mr. McGrath. Roll call, Mr. Hernandez.
Yes.
Mr. McGrath.
Yes.
Mr. Musella.
Yes.
Mr. Neglia.
Yes.
Mr. Karifi.
Yes.
Motion passes. Moving on to approval of payroll and bills list. CFO Leonard Ho recommends authorization for payment. Number one, to authorize payment of the June 7th, 2024 regular miscellaneous payroll estimated at $1,650,000. And number two, payment of bills from voucher list of June 1st, 2024 through June 3rd, 2024, which is $1,330,928.27. Motion to approve the above resolution?
Motion.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Hernandez, seconded by Mr. McGrath. Roll call, Mr. Hernandez.
Yes.
Mr. McGrath.
Yes.
Mr. Musella.
Yes.
Mr. Neglia.
Yes.
Mr. Karifi.
Yes.
Motion passes. Okay, we're going to move along to the executive session. Before I read the executive session, just a note for the public. We anticipate the executive session to not go longer than 10 minutes, and we do anticipate action to be taken on at least one of the items. With that being said, executive session resolution. Whereas the Open Public Meetings Act, PL 1975, Chapter 231, permits the exclusion of the public from meeting in certain circumstances, and whereas a township council is given the opinion that such circumstances presently exist, and whereas a township council wishes to discuss the Blue Collar Collective bargaining agreement negotiations and settlement negotiations, and whereas minutes will be kept, and once the matter involving the confidentiality of above no longer requires confidentiality, the minutes can be made public. Now therefore being resolved by the township council, the township of Parsippany Troy Hills that the public be excluded from this meeting. Motion to adjourn to closed session, please.
Motion. Second.
Motion made by Mr. Neglia, seconded by Mr. Musella. Roll call, Mr. Hernandez.
Yes.
Mr. McGrath.
Yes.
Mr. Musella.
Yes.
Mr. Neglia.
Yes.
Mr. Karifi.
Yes.
We will just adjourn to closed session for just a few minutes. Thank you. Okay, we're back in session. I'd like to get entertain a motion to go back into open session, please.
Make a motion?
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Musella, seconded by Mr. Hernandez. Roll call, Mr. Hernandez.
Yes.
Mr. McGrath.
Yes.
Mr. Musella.
Yes.
Mr. Neglia.
Yes.
Mr. Karifi.
Yes.
We are back into open session. At this time, I would like the township attorney just to give us a quick report.
Sure. We emerged from executive session at 8:38 PM, where we discussed two matters. One was a labor matter dealing with Blue Collar Collective bargaining agreement negotiations, and the second was settlement negotiations dealing with pending litigation involving Keystone Engineering. No official action was taken. Copies of these minutes will be available at such time as the council determines there is no harm to the public interest.
Thank you, Mr. Lavery. At this time, we're going to go ahead and move along to Resolution Number 2024-85, which is approving the settlement agreement in the Thomas Controls Litigation Matter. May I please have a motion to approve the resolution?
Make a motion?
Motion made by Mr. Musella, seconded by Mr. Neglia. Roll call, Mr. Hernandez.
Yes.
Mr. McGrath.
Yes.
Mr. Musella.
Yes.
Mr. Neglia.
Yes.
Mr. Karifi.
Yes.
Motion passes. At this time, I'd like to entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Motion.
Motion made by Mr. McGrath, seconded by Mr. Hernandez. Roll call, Mr. Hernandez.
Yes.
Mr. McGrath.
Yes.
Mr. Musella.
Yes.
Mr. Neglia.
Yes.
And Mr. Karifi.
Yes.
Okay, have a great night, everyone.
Thank you.